I would like to welcome everyone who has joined us here in person and via Zoom to our June 9, 2022 Village Board meeting. I would like to ask everyone to stand. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. The victims of God are not sinners. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, which is ours, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Everybody here can step a seat, please.
Dad, that means you.
All right, so let me begin by introducing the Village Board, and there is somebody coming in. All the way to the far end is Trustee Graziano. Next to him is Trustee Vic Forelli. Next to him, sitting in for Trustee Buick, who was on special assignment for the Village Board, is our Attorney Kelly Martin. Next to her is Jesus Gomez, my Deputy Mayor, and next to me is Desiree Parkman, Village Clerk. So, welcome once again. This is our semi-annual organization or reorganization meeting. So, I'm going to begin by starting with the consultants for the Village of Woodbury. Can I please have a motion and a second to approve the following consultants for fiscal year 2022 and 2023? Engineers for the Village, H2M Architects in Engineering, Attorney for the Village, Norton and Torrey LLP, Planner for the Village, Nelson Pulp and Borkes, Attorney for the ZDA, Norton and Torrey LLP. Motion, please?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving along. Authorized, okay. Can I please have a motion and a second to authorize each 2M Architects in Engineering as the engineer for the Village to file applications to all regulatory agencies as required on behalf of the Village of Woodbury for those projects authorized by the Village for fiscal year 2022 to 2023? I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So it gives me great pleasure, and I don't need a motion and a second, to ennoblement appoint Jesus Gomez as Deputy Mayor. Congratulations, buddy. All right, we want to be wearing shirts like that at every meeting.
That's right.
Okay.
Let me see.
Membership in state associations. Okay, so I'm going to take this one by one. Can I please have a motion and a second to authorize the Village Clerk to enroll the Village as members with the following organizations? New York State Conference of Mayors, NICO. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The Orange County Association of Towns, Villages and Cities. Motion? I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right, Jesus with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
The Orange County Municipal Planning Federation. A motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
The Orange County Water Authority, Mudna. Do I have a mo-- I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the Woodbury Chamber of Commerce.
I'll make that.
I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving along. Designation of official newspaper. Can I please have a motion and a second to designate The Times Record as the official newspaper for the Village of Woodbury?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? And may I use the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving right along. All right, can I please have a motion and a second to adopt the investment policy designation of depository and audited of abstract voucher policy as presented? I'll make the motion. Second? Second by Vic Forelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Can I please have a motion and a second to adopt the mileage reimbursement and food stipend policy for employees attending board-approved conferences and meetings held on an all-day basis?
Motion.
Second.
All right, second by motion by Trustee Graziano, second by Trustee Forelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion and a second to establish the following liaisons to the Village Board. Okay, so liaison to the Town Board is me, the Mayor, and Trustee Gomez, the Deputy Mayor.
See what I did there? I saw.
Yeah. Liaison to the Planning Board, Trustee Gomez and Trustee Graziano. Liaison to the zoning Board, Trustee Buick and Trustee Forelli. Liaison to the Fire Department, Trustee Buick and Trustee Gomez. Liaison to the Water and Sewer Department, Trustee Gomez and Trustee Graziano. Liaison to the Building Department, Trustee Forelli and Trustee Graziano. And liaison to the Highway Department, Trustee Buick and Trustee Forelli. Can I have a motion and a second, please, on that?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Can I please have a motion and a second to appoint the following individuals to the following position? Appeal Officers of Foyers, me, the Mayor. Procurement Officer, me, the Mayor. Fire Police Captain, Scott Danielson. Fire Police, Dennis Kenny, Christopher Salvo and Charlie Newt. Planning Board Chairperson, Christopher Gerber. And zoning Board of Appeals Chairperson, Karen Rogers.
Person, please.
Porthing. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right.
Did you say any in favor?
No. He said no. Okay. Moving along. Meeting dates and meeting public comment procedures. Okay, can I please have a motion and a second to adopt the meeting public comment procedures as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
All right.
All right. Procurement policy. Can I please have a motion and a second to adopt the procurement policy as presented? I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And finally. Finally, if he said. Okay. Yeah, you know, I got it. Okay. It was all part of that one.
Oh.
Yeah, we're grouping it down. All right, so motion and a second to adopt the 2022-2023 B-Schedule for this upcoming fiscal year.
Motion.
Second.
Second by Jesus Gomez. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that ends our reorganization meeting. Great job, guys. You were ready to get through it.
Eight minutes.
Eight minutes, sorry. All right, moving right along to public hearings. So, a public hearing is being continued from our May 31 meeting to entertain public comments on introductory local law 3 of 2022, which would amend Chapter 154 of the Village Code entitled Fire Prevention. This local law, this local law would provide for requirement for the installation of napster boxes. Let me just state for the record that we received comments back from the Planning Board in their meeting of June 1, and the local law has been amended to reflect those changes that the Planning Board suggested. So. Okay. And as well, the Village Clerk reminds me, we've also received comment back from H2M as well, as the building inspector.
Well, the H2M is where the part where you was planning.
Planning Board, okay. So we also received comments back from the building inspector. Those have also been incorporated into the changes to the napster box here. So, before we go any further, I would like to go out to the public and see if there are any other comments, starting with here at Village Hall. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this? I will soon know. Okay. Going out to those who have joined us virtually. Anybody wish to speak on the napster box law? Local law 3. Okay. Hearing no further comments from the public, can I please have a motion and a second to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, it gives me great pleasure to ask for a motion and a second to adopt local law 3 of 2022, local law 4 of 2022, which would amend Chapter 154 of the Village Code entitled Fire Prevention. Now, it gives me pass the video conference.
Yes, so they.
Yeah, so they're all yes again. To provide for requirement for the installation of napster boxes. So, can I have that motion, please?
Motion.
Second it?
Second.
Second? All right, local.
Trustee Graziano.
Yes.
Trustee Forelli.
Yes.
Trustee Buick is absent. Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
And Mayor Jeff Martin.
Absolutely, yes. And that is it. So, on behalf of the Board, I would just like to thank our-- this was a collaborative effort, this local law, not just between our consultants, but also with the Planning Board, Planning Board Chair, our head building inspector, Mike Penella, as well as our fire chief, Chris Burke. So thank you all for bringing this to our attention. Moving along to public comment on agenda items only. So I will start virtually. Does anyone wish to speak on any items that are on the agenda moving forward? Okay. Or yet? Anything? Nope. Very good. Moving right along. Okay. Can I please have a motion and a second to approve or accept, receive of the minutes of the meeting held on May 31, 2022?
I'll make that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Desiree, will you please read the abstract?
Abstract number 1, change vouchers 220001 to 220065. The total is $302,196.86.
Can I please have a motion and a second to approve the abstract is read?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving right along. Fire Department Equipment Request. Can I have a motion and a second to approve Fire Department Equipment Request, 2022-18, totaling approximately $1,019.98 for the purchase of a cut-off saw and a diamond blade?
Make that motion.
And I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? What I don't see on there?
Let me see this.
Hey, he is there. So, moving right along. Waterwell testing stats. So it gives me great pleasure to introduce William A. Cannavan, President of Hydro-Environmental Solutions, to give us some updates on the waterwell testing. So, Bill.
I'm here. Hi, everybody.
How you doing?
Happy Thursday. Thank you for letting me zoom in. It saves the Village a lot of money. It's a really good thing. So, I'll take all right through where we're at. A quick recap, maybe a month, month and a half ago when I was before you guys, and I told you about the townwide geologic, hydrogeologic study, the rating of sites for potential good water, water supply wells. And we're current-- we currently are at the Troutbrook Well Field, which is a really amazing geologic formation. We-- I'm going to go through it a little bit, what we've done. But we drilled three borings, we set three test wells. We ran mini-pump tests, for lack of a better description of it. We're currently targeting test boring 2-22, which is the middle of the three test boring locations we cited. If you looked at some of the stuff we sent to the Village, there's a USGS topo map with Troutbrook, the surrounding area on it. And that's the one we're targeting right now because we had very favorable results. I believe we pumped it at around 80 or 100 gallons a minute in a-- with 10 feet of screen, well screen, with, you know, minimal drawdown, it stabilized. So based on that, we're working with Work Drilling and Fry Drilling, who are really good drillers, very knowledgeable. And we, at present, ordered-- whoop, step back a second. We collected a whole bunch of soil samples from varying depths. We sent them to the well-screen company and to an independent lab, and they did a sieve analysis. Based on that sieve analysis, we can see vertically in the formation where the best water-bearing formation is. We received those results back. We looked at it, plotted a bunch of stuff up, did some research. We like what we see at TB 2-22. Based on that information from the lab and the well-screen company and a pow-wow with the drillers and a couple geologists in my group at my company, we ordered 15 feet of screen from a national screen. The screen size we ordered, based on the sieve analysis, is 80 slot, which is 0.08 screen, which means there's .08 of an inch between the wire round screen, basically. We ordered a setup where there's 5 feet of screen, 80-slot screen, with a piece of casing or solid pipe between, and then another 5 feet and an extra 5 feet, in case you want to set screen deeper, which we're probably going to do. The reasoning behind ordering what we call a blank, solid piece of 12-inch pipe, is that we saw-- we know by logging the boring that there's a sandy layer. It's not as favorable for water production. So we're going to omit that. We're going to blanket off so that a lot of fine sand doesn't come into the well. And we're going to set the screen. We're going to drill-- the screen should be here in about another three or four weeks. We'll probably be out there sometime between the second week of July and the first week of August. The next steps are, after we get our screen, we're going to mobilize the site, drill about a 90-foot well. We think the best formation is from about 85 to 100. And we're going to decide in the field, based on the screen we have, exactly where we're going to set it. It's probably going to be a two-day process to maybe three. Drill boring, set the screen, drilling-- I'm sorry, casing. Set the casing 50 feet, so we comply with Orange County Department of Health specs on a well. Then we'll drill inside the casing. We'll set the screen. And then we'll spend probably a week developing the well with surge and airlift. After we're comfortable that we have nice, clean water at the volume we want, or the maximum volume of the formation, the formation can handle, then we're going to gear up to run a 72-hour pumping test, which will involve pumping that well, the new well, monitoring existing onsite wells, which some of them are monitored wells. One's a new pumping well, which we're in the process of working on with H2M getting permitted, and then a bunch of off-site wells. I would say by mid-September, by the end of September, we'll have all that work done. We'll know the water we have, and we'll file everything with the DOH in the New York State, DC, to get it permitted. Just a couple tidbits of info. An 80-slot screen, if we-- if we hit the mother load, so to speak, I think can do 80 gallons a minute per foot of screen. So if we have 10 feet of screen and we have a really good formation, we could potentially hit as much as 800 gallons a minute, which would pretty much-- I think Mickey's on. I see him there, yeah. Would pretty much resolve Village's water issues for quite a while. I don't want to sit here and make those promises, but from what we see, the sieve analysis, the analysis we did, the field work, we think there's really good water there. And we think we can get a really good well. And the one well we're proposing might be exactly what Village wants to resolve their future needs. And I think the last thing I'll tell the Board and everybody listening is, if-- let's say we get a-- the last one we did was like 270, 270 gallons a minute. If we get in that neighborhood, somewhere between 250 and 350 gallons per minute, then we're going to revisit the group. And we're going to say, "You guys let us know. We think there's another 250 or 300 somewhere else on one of those other two borings. And if we have the budget, we can develop another well in the same well field and get another, whatever, 250, 300 gallons a minute, and we'll be done." We are-- I think-- I don't know if Desiree is the person we send Bill invoices to, but we should talk budget. Like, right now, we're doing really well. We're way under budget. Everybody from my group to the drillers on is spot-on. And I'm hoping that we might have enough money, based on the original proposal. If we need another well, a second well, besides the one we're doing, we may have the money to do a lot of it, if not all of it, already allotted. So I don't want to jinx us, but that's where I think we're at. And so I think by-- I have one more thing to say after I say this thought. But I think by-- by mid-September to early October, we're going to have a really good well installed, developed, and we're going to know we have good capacity. And then we're going to have to make a decision collectively on where we are with the budget, how much water we actually have, and if we want to go for another well. And then the only-- I said it was the last thing before, but this is the last thing. We're going to go out there. I've been talking with Natalie in H2M. And we did a map, which I think you guys may have seen, which showed a 200-foot radius around the well. And we're just going to go out there in the field and confirm that we have control, which is required, 200-foot radius. The Village, us, doesn't have like-- someone else owns the property. So hopefully-- and I think it's going to work out, but where we drilled the test boring, if we develop a well and there's no other surrounding properties within that 200-foot radius, and we have control, it's great. So that's the last thing we have to confirm. And then we-- So if anybody asks questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Well, I'll start with CJ. Because this is like-- this is Christmas morning for Chris Graziano. Is letting the public know?
No, if we can-- if this is really true, and we can get anywhere near that much water, that's a million gallons a day. It's a little over a million gallons a day. So, that's a ton of water, though. Yeah, that's about half of what we mean, what we mean by water usage is. So, that'd go a long way. So let's see what they get when they--
I'm curious how long we look at this taking. If you're saying by September, so then what would be the approval process after that? Because this could-- this other well is--
This is the test. Then you got to go through the whole rigmarole and build a real one.
Right. And then--
So Mayor brings up a good point, and I'll just refer back to what H2M and I are working on with the first well. The first well we did at 260, whatever, 270 a minute, where Sean Peters from H2M and Natalie and I are working on answering the DEC and the DOH concerns. And those two entities were really good with the review process. I mean, they got back to us in about four or five weeks. So we'll probably answer their questions and be done with that in the next month, two months? So to answer the group's question, I think if we get the pump test report in and everything in sometime in October, we're looking at like a four-to-eight-week review and turnaround time for their comments and addressing their comments. And there's going to be comments. Bottom line, they're going to-- they're going to have comments and they say, "Oh, well, you got to do X, Y, and Z in addition to what you did." And that's fine. That's standard procedure. So by year-end, or a little earlier, November-ish, if we do things right, we might have a couple approved wells out there and have some really good water. And we can just design the water main and start the distribution process.
That's good news.
I have a question for you. How long after you get all the approvals and everything goes-- everything goes okay and you meet all the deadlines and all the questions and everything that come up before that well is actually online?
That's-- I would say it's probably a better question for H2M, but knowing what I know, I would say the Village has already started a lot of legwork to run the distribution line. They cleared trees. So Mickey and his group and others have already done a good job with lining up where we're carrying the water main, clearing and grubbing, and so on. But I'm-- I mean, Mickey can jump in if I misspeak, but I think--
Yeah, Bill.
Maybe by next summer, something like that.
Yes, the one we have now that you drilled earlier, that should be online by March of next year.
Yeah.
But I'm thinking probably June, July of next year, we should be able to have the other one online as well.
Good. That's what I thought, too. So a year from now, we all get along and we do our-- you know, we work together and we get everything in. We might have two or-- probably not three, but definitely two viable, really good groundwater resource wells to augment Village's existing supply. My hope is we find enough at TB 2-22 that we may not have to do the other well. And then we have that like as in our hand, our ace in hand, like, all right, well, five years from now, we know at TB 3 it's grade 2. We could always go there and, you know, drill another well and probably find pretty good water there, too, without a lot of interference.
So really, Bill, what we're doing right now, what you're doing right now, is setting up Woodbury for the next 10 years easily. We're developing.
Yeah, I mean, I hope 10 years or longer for water demand.
CJ, you have a comment?
No, that'll do it.
Mickey, you have anything else to add, Mr. Phillips?
No. Bill was great tonight again, as always. I appreciate him.
I appreciate being here. You have no idea. We love doing this kind of work.
You have anything else to add, Bill, before we let you go? And thank you for joining us once again and giving us an update.
No, my pleasure. And I'll be in touch with Natalie once we have the well screen and Mickey, when we're going to schedule the drilling.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Bill.
Good to see you guys. Have a good night. We have to say one last thing. Go Rangers.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye. All right. Moving right along. So that is good news. We're going right into decisions on moratorium waiver petition 19-7 Springs Road. So at the last meeting, we had asked our attorney to draft an unfavorable or deny the request. So I need a motion and a second to adopt the following resolution as presented, denying the request of 19-7 Springs Road from exemption from law 9 of 2021.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second it? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Here comes the difficult one. Okay. So at the last meeting, and I think there was some confusion with the Yeni LLC application. So what I'm gathering from this-- from this application is it's really two separate entities. You've got Dice Bowl, and then you've got H2--
HLV Enterprises.
HLV Enterprises. So at this point, I'm going to ask the Board what their pleasure is. Or actually, let me start with our attorney. Can we approve the Dice Bowl for their exemption? Or do we have to come back and redo all that? Approve the Dice Bowl for their exemption, or do we have to come back and redo all that?
No, you don't, what was part of their petition and their request was an exemption from the moratorium, and in their petition, they discussed Dice Bowl, which as this board knows is. Extending the existing restaurant into suite four. And then they also referenced H L B Enterprises, which is converting a. Suite nine, which I guess is retail now, to a new restaurant. When the applicant was here, he seemed to only discuss Dice Bowl, so there really wasn't any other information presented to you regarding H L B Enterprises. You did receive your memo from H two M, and they did reference that there. Would likely be an increased water usage based on the H L B application. So you can certainly separate this and approve one, approve both, deny one.
Okay, so I will ask the board's pleasure, I, I have no problem myself separating this out, it's two separate applications right now. Hopefully, we have a, an approved or a resolution approving Dice Bowl. So we can move forward with that and then decide if we're going to do H L B. So at this time, I am asking for a motion in a second to adopt the following resolution. Exempting Dice Bowl at ninety-five Mayor Lane to law number nine twenty-twenty-one. Anybody? Do I have a second? I'll second it. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
We're going to vote just on the.
On the Dice Bowl.
On the Dice Bowl.
Just the Dice Bowl.
Okay. Okay, so CJ?
No.
No, Vic?
I'm just a Dice Bowl?
I'm just a Dice Bowl.
Yes.
Jesus, is it yes? Myself is yes, so it's three, one, a Dice Bowl. Okay, moving along to H L B. And I have a motion in a second to adopt the following resolution exempting H L B at ninety-five Lane from law number nine twenty-twenty-one.
You can have a motion, and you can have a second, and it can fail.
And it can.
So I'll make the motion.
And I'll second it. All right, discussion? All right, vote, CJ, how do you vote?
No.
Dick?
I gotta vote on this one.
Jesus?
We're going to do more about.
No, they didn't provide much of any information that was specific to H L B.
Like, it was going to be the same exact room, one bathroom in the same place?
I'd have to go back to. Their application for the planning board.
That used to be an existing restaurant?
No, he said. Their architect has said that this. Project includes an interior renovation of unit number nine within the Old Glory Mall. Which allows restaurants and drinking establishments, the applicant would like to retain live musical entertainment. Which would focus on jazz. And then they titled it as the proposed conversion to a restaurant slash drinking establishment, I'm not sure what was there.
So can we have him come back and give us that stuff? That information?
You can certainly ask him to come back and, and rehold the hearing on that specific one, if you'd like to do that.
Oh, we can have him reapply.
But, but just this one?
Yes, yeah. So it's yes, or yes to approve, or no, or not?
Well, I'll approve it, I don't see a problem with that. I'd like that more information.
I'm going to say no, and the H L B motion fails.
So that's three noes.
Yes. And then they could reapply with more information, so.
Yeah, they did have some confusion, do you mind telling that letter? Yes, uh, do you want me to distribute nineteen-seven Springs since they're not here as well? Or are you?
Usually just send the building department. The building department needs to know.
They do, but I think in that instance, the applicant.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. Do you, does the board want an existing escrow, or using an existing escrow that he has on cloud together?
I'm fine with the existing escrow.
That's fine.
Yeah. Out in our eyes. Chris Graziano? All right, moving right along. Okay, temporary road closure request block party, as she would place. And I please have a motion in a second to approve the temporary road closure of shoe a place on August thirteenth. Twenty-twenty-two for the residents of that area to hold a block party. I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Did we? Want to buy your op first?
Yeah, I got an email.
Okay, so you agree with this one?
Yeah.
Still have to go to the planning, to the building department for application. That the project application process requires is to be done.
So we're good, right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving along.
Before you move, I don't know if you saw that the one you moved previously, it threw their request.
Cancelled.
So that was cancelled, I sent that to them.
I just wanted to mention.
Yeah.
Well, Rock told them that the request of that, that, which wrong.
Authorized mayor sign H D R master agreement for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three. Can I please have a motion in a second to authorize me? The mayor. To sign the master agreement with H D R for their services to the planning board for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three.
Anybody want the mayor to sign, no?
I'll second. All right, do I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion seconded by CJ, all in favor?
Aye.
Can we have an extra item, secret action, evaluation and mitigation of sanitary sewer overflow? Can I please have a motion in a second to declare the village of, the village of Woodbury Board of Trustees as lead agency under SECRE. For the project known as evaluation of mitigation of sanitary sewer overflows in the village collection system. Motion second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I just want to note for the record, the final environmental assessment form, part one, has been prepared and reviewed by the board of trustees. I need a motion in a second to preliminary classify this project as type-one action pursuant to six Geneva Code Rules and Regulations Part. Six, one, seven. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I did. I know, and I love that, it's a learning experience. When it gets sensitive. Okay, that ends, that ends regular business for us, I know how exciting it's been for everybody. So at this time, I will go out to the public for public comment, starting with. Nothing, she's good, alrighty.
You just came to.
This meeting has taken Maria's breath away, she is speaking. All right, going out to the public, anyone in the public who is joining us virtually wish to speak. And any item?
A name.
Once, twice. So, all right, all right, moving right along to department comments. Starting with the man with the plan, Mr. Rob Wine. Nothing, all right, as you all know, I'm legally obligated to mention this at every meeting. How wonderful and great Rob Wine and his crew is. Thank you all, thank you, Rob, how are we doing? Uh, Mike Pannella, anything?
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor and the board. I'd just like to say for the past two to three weeks. Our department has been out there collectively. Going out there proactively and reactively. Uh, in regards to property maintenance issues and overgrown grass. Um, we've issued numerous violations. I would say to date, we are probably about ninety-seven percent in compliance with those violations. Um, the few that are still outstanding will be addressed accordingly. And we look to have this, um. Settled up by the end of the week, uh, so we are out there and. If, to the public, be a good neighbor and cut your grass.
Sit, Michael. Michael, so I just want to make mention of this, because we are working with the town of Woodbury's Building and Grounds Department. To make sure there is compliance on some of these issues with the houses that are basically bang-on. I know we're going to have to probably bring in an army for several of these houses, because the lawns have gotten. Way too high would be with the grass, with all the rain we received, so. This is a cooperative effort to make sure that. Everything is looking prim and proper here in Woodbury, so thank you, Michael. Thank you, Michael, thank you, John Hannah. Mickey Phillips?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Nice, thank you, Michael. Mickey?
I'm good, sir. I'm good, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, moving right along to board comments, starting at the end of the table. Oh, yeah, I always keep considering the board. Go ahead, Michael.
Don't have anything to say, thank you, CJ.
You know, I sometimes forget she's here, she's sitting right next to me.
What about June twenty-eighth? June twenty-eighth is primary election day. It was requested that I provide an update here.
Where are we going to vote?
If you vote at the.
This is important, this is important for everybody sitting at home. Please pull out a piece of paper and a pen to write this down.
This is important, because voting is important, I believe, it was in the last meeting, the meeting before, that trust bureau spoke about voter apathy. Rob Wine was going to talk about this for twenty minutes, I don't know.
Go ahead.
Please come out and vote, there is a Republican and Democrat primary. More people who vote in Woodbury, the stronghold shows we are. Uh, if you vote at the St. Patrick's Gymnasium for this election only, you will be voting at the Senior Center. This election only. In August is the primary, and in November, you will still be voting at the Gymnasium. That's all I have for you.
You should, I just need you to extend it a little bit more.
Okay, if you live in Central Valley or in the Village of Harry Porsha, that's in Woodbury, you do vote at the Central Valley Firehouse. That is still your location there. Uh, so we have ten voting districts, three are at the Firehouse, seven are at the Senior Center, which means it could be very busy, so vote early or early. There is early voting that is happening as well. You can vote anywhere in the seven locations in the county. Closest to us is the Cornwall Ambulance Building and the Monroe Town Hall. Early voting is for ten days prior to election day, but not the day before. So please feel free to do that, and there's also absentee voting that is permitted as well.
Desiree, did you want me to give the history of how voting came to be with the Constitution?
No, right?
And as a reminder, all villages are closed on June twentieth and observance of June.
T V, yes.
Which is on Sunday, so that means the twentieth will be closed. The tax center is collecting taxes, ten to two, Monday through Friday at Village Hall.
No, I'm good. I got through some of that. Okay, Kelly, you have a minute?
I do not.
CJ? You're up.
My comments are really short tonight, but, you know. The, the word voter apathy was just mentioned, what I'm, what I'm going to say is not about voting, because everybody should do that, and that's, everybody, it's a right that we have, that we should not take for granted, but. What I'm going to say tonight is, you know, thank you, Maria, for coming, thank you, boys in TV land for attending the meeting, but we need some more participation in what we do. We need more people to volunteer for things, we need more people to be part of the process, um, and kind of drive local government. You know, I really would like to see more people get involved. You've been putting out, you know. Over three years now I've been in office, we've been putting out multiple zoning and planning board applications, and we've gotten very few people. Looking, looking to participate. We've always looked for people to volunteer for our ambulance and fire. And, you know, it goes for running for office too, I mean, it's been, I realize, you know. The, the fervor of what's going on now kind of makes it a little distasteful, but I think we can bring the corn back as, as people who run for office. So what I'm going to say to everybody is be part of the process, be part of the solution, and go out and vote, and when you do, demand transparency, demand integrity, and demand. People being above board, and let's, let's vote for the best public officials we can, and work together, and we can do things, and have a really great, if we just get enough people together and pull one direction. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, trustee Graziano, trustee Ferrelli.
As always, I'm going to keep my, uh. My comments short. And I want to thank everybody that's here, everybody that logged in from home, thank you for participating, thank you for coming. And that's all I have.
I just, you know, I, I just wish, and I will say this at every meeting, as I'm legally obligated, obligated to say about Rob Wine. I just wish when he called me on the phone, Vic Ferrelli, he would say the same thing, I'm going to keep my comments short. Although I did forget to say one thing. Let's go Rangers. There you go, all right, trustee Gomez.
My shoulder, uh, thank you all for coming out, and, uh. Please get back home safe, and God bless all of you, good night.
Okay, my turn.
The mayor.
The mayor.
The mayor.
Me, the mayor. All right, first, I want to just give you an update on the pool, I had a meeting up there today with my department heads. And the town supervisor. And all their consultants handling the pool, but. Things are going well, it looks like, it, it's beautiful, I think it's going to be a home run for Woodbury. I think the, the kids are going to love it, people moving here are going to love it, I want to thank the town for allowing us to sort of take part in this whole thing, I want to thank our, our team, the village's team. For everything they've done, especially our highway department, who was up there today, making sure, or, or hoping to make sure that we can have this completed in time for the July. Second opening, so it looks good for right now, hopefully the weather holds and things can continue to progress. I also want to let people know that on Monday, I had the pleasure of addressing the. Volunteers of the Woodbury Community Ambulance. And I want to let people know that, one, our ambulance and fire departments are constantly looking for volunteers. It is a very rewarding thing to do, I, I could not do it. What, what these individuals do on a daily basis for this community. We are currently, right now, the village is entertaining several incentive. Ideas in terms of recruitment and retention for both sets of volunteers, for the ambulance and for the fire department. I ask, if you've got the time to do so, or if ever as a kid you wanted to be a fireman, as a small boy or a small girl. Here's your opportunity. Here's your opportunity to be that EMS, to be that medic. That you may, they will train you and you'll be working with a great set of human beings. So consider it. It's very reward, rewarding once again. With that. I will ask for an adjournment, I want to thank everybody for joining us. Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Vic Ferrelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Our next meeting will be June twenty-third. Thank you, Woodbury, for joining us, and have a good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Good night, everyone. Good night, grandpa.